2015, can we have the roll call, please?
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Yeah.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Pete Cremon?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Here.
Carl Wymer?
Here. People will stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, a couple of quick announcements I always have to make to remind myself to turn my cellphone on to silent or off so we don't hear lots of silly noises. Also, if you're handing out paperwork, we have lots of hearings this evening in the open session. It's great if our clerk up front gets a copy for the record. We just came out of a committee of the whole meeting. We had two items to discuss, a discussion with the chief civil deputy prosecutor, Daniel Gibson, regarding potential litigation related to an agency contract, and also a discussion with legal counsel regarding the Lake Watcom total maximum daily load. And I think there's a motion on one of those items.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council accept the Lake Watcom total maximum daily load clarification document submitted by the Washington Department of Ecology in their letter to the county executive dated November 12th, 2015, and consider the Lake Watcom total maximum daily load dispute to be resolved, and request that the county executive transmit a letter to the Department of Ecology stating such.
Second. All right, that's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. One other announcement, we, at the end of the year, we always have lots of openings on our advisory committee, and I was signing lots of thank you letters from people who've been serving, so I know there's lots of openings coming up, so check out the website for that. One correction, I think at our last meeting, I said that there was a deadline for a planning commission open of November 30th, and actually the deadline is Tuesday, December 1st. So anybody that's interested in that current opening in District 2 on the planning commission, that will be the deadline, December 1st. Our first up this evening is a special presentation of the Behavioral Health Revenue Advisory Committee Quarterly and Annual Reports. And it looks like Sheriff Elfo is doing that this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Wymer and members of the council. I'm Bill Elfo, Sheriff of Watcom County and Chair of the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Revenue Advisory Committee, commonly known as B-RAC. Thank you for the opportunity to deliver the fourth quarter report of the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Advisory Committee, which this quarter focuses on mental health and substance abuse services provided to youth and their families through school-based contracts. I think I speak for all members of the committee that making a strong commitment to providing services to youth can pay huge dividends in terms of reducing long-term mental health disorders, addiction, and crime problems for future generations. The strategy follows PETA, the Prevention, Intervention, Treatment, and Aftercare Continuum, which is the same standard used in programs that provide behavioral health and chemical dependency and other programs the county operates. These services are delivered in all seven Watcom County school districts. The number of unduplicated students who received mental health and/or substance abuse services in the 2014-15 school year was 1,361. This included 10,454 contacts with an average of four to five contacts per student. Of these contacts, 582 students were referred for mental health or substance abuse services. There were a total of 1,004 total referrals reflecting that some students were referred more than once. Schools track success in preventing antisocial behaviors from deteriorating and reported. Ninety-eight percent of the students who received services experienced similar or fewer volume of truancy issues. Ninety-four percent of the students experienced similar or fewer suspensions. Ninety-two percent of the students experienced similar or fewer absences. Ninety-three of the stu-- ninety-three percent of the students experienced similar or fewer discipline problems, and eighty-seven percent of the students maintained their grades. The school services report that you have in your council packets highlights more specifics on the scope of various services provided, as well as specific programs such as the suicide prevention and outreach efforts with the Bellingham School District, as well as other specific programs and accomplishments that are based on evidence-based practices. Thank you, and I'll ask you if you have any questions.
Any questions?
I'll just note that the total funding for the program last year was 627,000, and it's, for this year, it'll be 677,000 dollars was allocated.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Sheriff Elfo, and I'm very supportive of the program, but the one thing I was struggling to understand, when you talk about the statistics, that, for example, I think you said something like ninety-plus percent of people had similar or less, lesser truancy issues. To me, the more operative number is what is changing downwards in terms of negative behavior as opposed to remaining the same. So do we have any numbers as to how things have improved as opposed to?
No, the schools reported static or improvement. They didn't distinguish, they don't report the two, but to keep antisocial behaviors from deteriorating and becoming worse certainly is an accomplishment in itself, because so many of these young people go downhill rather quickly once they get involved in addiction or they're dealing with mental health disorders.
And I certainly agree, you know, stopping and getting worse is great, I'd just like to see how we could quantify whether the programs, how we are quantifying where specific programs are creating improvements.
I will take that back to the Health Department staff and see if there's a way to quantify that for next year's report. Good thinking.
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, maybe I missed it, but I don't remember. You gave the statistics on mental health, and you gave the statistics on substance abuse. Are, what percentage of those are overlap?
That's actually in the report, if you just bear with me for a second.
Whereabouts? Because I didn't see that specific, but I might have missed it.
Substance abuse referrals was, were seventeen percent, mental health referrals were seventy-five percent, and those receiving both were eight percent.
Okay, that eight percent, then, is that in addition to those other percentages? That's what I couldn't?
No, those are overlaps.
Okay.
Those are the percentage of students that receive both types of services.
Thanks.
And it's also important to note that these seventy-five percent of the services are provided out in the school districts outside the, outside the city limits of Bellingham.
Well, I certainly appreciate the report, you know, as we've had discussion about incarceration, there's been lots of discussion about we need to do things earlier, and I think a lot of people don't realize that we are doing so many things, and this is a perfect example of one of them that we've jumped into, and appreciate your work on that.
At the last Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force meeting, we received a very good presentation on the effects of fetal alcohol syndrome and how that affect, affects future criminal behavior, so any of these upstream efforts certainly pay off huge dividends in the end.
Ms. Brenner?
Just thought, do you send copies of what we got, is anybody sending that to the media?
I believe the Health Department does, but I'll sugge-- if they--
I see Joe, he's--
Do they, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll make sure it happens.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Brown?
And, sorry, Sheriff, as we were talking about the statistics, the statistics within a year are interesting, and I think the ones that really tell us the success is, as I, for example, if a twelve-year-old is exhibiting X percentage of behavior, and we can arrest that, and we see that behavior not getting worse over the next three to five years, you know, three to four years, that's, you know, really useful to know as to what is the trending throughout the school, the entire, total school experience.
And that would be a success, but, you know, so part of the issue you have in quantifying is whether you have a static population or one that changes, where we, if we could put a bubble over the accounting, we'd have a better way of measuring that, but there's so many kids that come in and out of the school districts.
I recognize, it's difficult.
Oh, we have a representative from the Bellingham School District that wanted to provide some additional information.
Sure, love to hear it.
Thank you. Come here. I guess I can introduce you.
Yes, if you would, please. Joe Puller, Program Specialist with the Health Department, and so we have Kate Foster with the Bellingham School District. She is a school nurse currently in three of the buildings. She also convenes a group in the district called Parents Matter, which is a group of parents as well as professionals, and she also is a parent of two, but currently one student at Seehome, you're the one graduated, right?
That's right.
Okay, so she's here to share a few thoughts with you.
Thank you. I don't have much data, more anecdotally, a couple of years ago, as just a parent, I'm new to the school district as an employee, asked, trying to find out when I had two high schoolers or a middle school and a high school student, what it is they're learning about substance abuse prevention, and what do they know about the choices they're, that they're faced with daily at school and outside of school. And talking with the superintendent and then other people that he was introducing me to, I started to uncover a lot of programs that were available in our community to students, many of them funded by the one-tenth of one percent that is, that we're discussing. And so it made me very hopeful, and then as I continued to go on and meet with some of these people and parents, talking about what's happening, I was impressed with their, their prevention and intervention strategies, substance abuse and mental health, and their suicide prevention strategies, and the restorative justice that you refer to. Some of the movement that's happening in the school district is very impressive, and I don't know the data, but there is impressive data around handling those kids with behavior problems a little bit differently, and teaching them social skills rather than excluding them from school until they figure it out on their own. So it's very hopeful, and I just, I wanted to thank you for the, for the opportunity to talk about some of the great things going on. The students in the high schools all have a case manager and a liaison to help the referrals that they have to mental health services or substance abuse, chemical dependency programs. They have somebody who is a case manager with them at school, they've got prevention clubs. Most of the elementary, or middle school and high schools have a prevention club that some of the staff that are funded by a lot of these funds are facilitating these programs, and so kids, as early as sixth grade, are really learning about what it means in this, in our community to not only thinking about prevention for them, but it's for the community. They organize a couple of programs, service learning programs that kick butt stay, so they're talking about what does it look like as a community to do some prevention programming, and I'm just pretty excited to see that all of this is going on, and thank you.
Great, it's nice to hear that the community is recognizing some of the efforts we've been trying to put into place.
Absolutely.
Right, thank you. All right, we are going to move right into our public hearings, we have eight of them this evening. I think they might go fairly rapidly, looking at the number of people in the audience, but that can always go awry at any minute.
Yeah, soon as you say that.
The first one this evening is an ordinance authorizing the levy of taxes for county and state purposes in Watcom County, Washington, for the year 2016. And it looks like no one signed up, because everybody loves taxes. So I'm going to open the public hearing, if anybody wants to talk to us about that, come on up. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, what's the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Ms. Brenner?
Well, I just want to say for the record, probably why there's nobody talking to it is we're not raising any taxes, everything's staying exactly how it was.
All right. Are you ready for the roll call? Go ahead.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes. All right, our second hearing is an ordinance limiting the 2016 general fund property tax levies, which is just what Ms. Brenner said, we're limiting it to the same as it was. Anybody, I'm going to open the public hearing, anybody want to talk to us on this one? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Our third hearing is an ordinance authorizing the levy of 2016 property taxes for county road purposes. I'm going to open the public hearing, and no one has signed up for this one either, but I'll open the public hearing, and anybody that wants to talk to us about road taxes, and now's your chance. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, wishes of the council?
Move approval.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, any discussion? I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Onto our fourth hearing, which is an ordinance authorizing the levy of taxes for conservation future purposes for 2016. And--
If nobody signed up.
Okay, no one signed up for this one, I'm going to open the public hearing anyway, if anybody wants to talk to us about conservation futures tax. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval, second.
All right, we are anxious this evening.
Yes, we are.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? We're ready for the roll call.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Okay, onto hearing number five, which is a resolution adopting the 2016 budget for the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District and Subzones, and we're doing this acting as the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. We've got our flood hats on for this one. No one signed up for this public hearing, but I'll open it anyway, anybody want to talk to us about the flood taxes? If you do, come on down. Were you raising your hand? Oh, okay. I thought I finally had a willing participant here. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, what are the wishes of the Board of Supervisors?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we're ready for the roll call.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Onto number six, a resolution authorizing the levy of taxes for the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District for 2016. Again, we are acting as the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. I will open that public hearing, no one's on the list, anybody want to talk to us about the flood control taxes in this one? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? We're ready for the roll call.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Onto number seven, which is a resolution adopting the 2016 budget for the Point Roberts Transportation Benefit District. This will bring people out of the woodwork. I'm going to open the public hearing, it looks like no one has signed up, is there anybody that wants to talk to us about Point Roberts Transportation? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, oh, we get some discussion, Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, we've gotten some emails from people in Point Roberts, and my concern is, there doesn't seem to be a consensus on what we should be doing with the money. This is just setting the money aside, right? Or, does this commit, oh, there's Joe. Does this commit us to do what was requested by the one committee?
Joe Puller with Public Works, the Point Roberts Transportation Benefit Committee asked us to do some shoulder construction, which I believe that person did not have an issue with.
No.
But had some concerns with the intersection analysis that we were going to do, and we're going to look at different options, signals, roundabouts, full signal bouts, compact roundabouts, we'll bring that back to the committee, we'll all take a look at it, and then we'll come back to the executive and the council with hopefully something that the committee and us and everyone up there will work with. So there's a lot of opportunity yet to work with the committee on this.
One other question, how much is it going to cost to do that, that part?
The shoulder were, if they wanted paved?
No, no, just to do the investigation?
Analysis?
Analysis.
It'll take, we're going to do that in-house with staff.
Oh.
It'll take a staff person a couple of days.
Good. Perfect, they were worried about that, too.
All right, so we have this in front of us, Mr. Cremon?
If I might add, the, the feeling is that the suggestion and the potential of a new roundabout in Point Roberts would not be a cost-effective way of spending that, those limited funds--
At that intersection.
--at that intersection, because, you know, whether or not there really is a, a need for such an expensive project like that for, for that particular area is, is, according to the view of some, not necessary. And the desire has been expressed that we maybe allocate that, those monies to something that's a little more support, supported by the local community. So I just wanted to, to mention that so that as our stellar staff goes about trying to determine how to best spend the, the limited funds we have for that Point Roberts area and for transportation purposes, just keeps that in mind.
Ms. Brenner?
And I don't know if, John and Joe, if you guys have thought about this, but it would be really nice if, once you do some of the investigation, there could be a meeting up at Point Roberts to talk to the people up there instead of, you know, having--
I'm sorry, Joe Puller with Public Works, you know, this, what we're doing is simply what the Point Roberts Committee has asked us to do, so we'll bring that back, and this is not something that we propose, we worked with them in their committee, we'll bring that back to the committee, we'll work with the committee up there to make sure that information gets out to the community, we'll make sure, I'm sure you'll want to be notified of that, too, so we'll let the council know when we're, you know, bringing that information back to the community and the committee up there.
Oh, clear, so you might go up there?
I'll probably have my staff person who does the work do it, because they'll, they'll be able to answer the questions a whole lot better than I will, but--
Well, I'd be interested to know when that's going to be.
Yeah, we have a staff person who's been assigned to that committee up there and has been working with them, and that's why they brought this request to us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on Point Roberts Transportation? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, that may be the quickest in my ten years on the council we ever passed hundreds of millions of dollars of taxes. Number eight hearing is an ordinance amending the Watcom County Code Title 20 and the Watcom County Comprehensive Plan related to development regulations in limited areas of more intensive rural development. And I don't think anybody signed up, although here comes the list, but it looks like someone wants to, actually, we do have one person signed up, Kristen Reed, so I'm going to open the public hearing, and it's all yours.
Thank you, Kristen Reed, I'm an attorney with Beltrusson Law Firm here in Bellingham. My firm represents Doug Puller and Sam Bullos, two property owners in the Smith and Guy Lammers and the Birch Bay Linden and Valleyview Road Lammers respectively. My clients are currently involved in litigation over the Growth Management Hearings Board final decision and order from 2013. The gist of the issue is whether my client's property should remain in the Lammers. I won't go into the minutia of the case unless you would like me to, but the bottom line is that the adoption of the proposed changes to the zoning code will resolve that litigation. The parties have already executed a settlement agreement, and one of the terms of the settlement involves the county approving these changes. This was something that was very carefully and thoughtfully crafted, and I believe it represents a full and fair, fairly negotiated settlement of the case that's now pending in the Superior Court. So if you have any questions, obviously, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise, I'd just respect the request that you adopt the ordinance as proposed.
Great, thank you, and I think we've discussed this, and we're good to go.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else want to speak to us on the Lammert issue? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Mr. Mann?
I'll just say, we've had this in planning committee a number of times, and it's very nice from both sides of a settle of a lawsuit or a dispute, come together and agree on something and give it to us to approve, so I am very happy to, to vote in favor of this, and I encourage everyone else to do so as well.
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, and also, there's, even though I, I'm a little hesitant because of the restrictions on the sizes, Gary was at our meeting today and explained that there's a commercial zoning up in the foothills, right in the middle of, you know, near where people live, that would allow for a 35,000-square-foot grocery store, which is one of the things I know that they really need and have requested for years. We can't make it happen, but at least now it legally can happen, so.
All right, any other discussion? We're ready for the roll call.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes, that passes unanimously, I think that's the quickest we ever had, eight hearings. We're going to move on to our open session, this is where members of the public can come up and talk to us about whatever you want. People get three minutes, when you get down to about thirty seconds, you'll get a warning your time's about up, and if your name is more complicated than Smith or Jones, it's great if you can spell it for us so we can get it right in the record. So I'm going to open the public session, anybody want to speak to us this evening? You can line up, either microphone works. Go ahead, sir. Sure. You can just, yeah, we'll pass. Go ahead.
Go ahead?
Yep.
Okay, I'm here to talk about the, the raw material, personal property taxes that are being imposed on the dairy, the blueberry growers and the raspberry growers in Watcom County. The, the raw materials that these people in, oh, first of all, my, my name, my name is Roger Elliott, I'm known as the mobile accountant, I'm a tax accountant, and I have my own business, whatever, and these are my clients that I'm talking about, okay? So, the raw materials that a blueberry grower or a raspberry grower puts in, plants, poles, irrigation, pumps, filters, are all raw materials that are taken to grow the blueberries or the raspberries. When Ford is making, when automobile parts, the raw materials that he takes to make, to make the automobile part is not taxed, okay? And, so, this is one thing that I don't quite understand, there's RCW 8436630, all qualifying, all qualifying farm machinery and equipment is an example from state property tax. Why was the farm equipment exemption not extended to Watcom County? That doesn't make any sense. First of all, the, there's some growers that are paying this tax, and there's some growers that aren't paying this tax, that's another unfair thing that's going on right now. Okay, I gave to this gentleman here, an oxbow blueberry picker costs 200, over $200,000 these days, okay? Okay. I gave to this gentleman here, an Oxbow blueberry picker costs 200, over $200,000 these days, okay? And, and then you add the tax onto it, which I've indicated the sales tax. So they're getting, they, they go and buy the, the, the blueberry picker, they pay sales tax on it. They, the next, next thing is that every, every year they have to pay personal property taxes on it. And when you get a piece of equipment that's worth $200,000, that's, that's a significant amount of money that, that, that individual blueberry grower is half, is having to pay as, as shown by what the invoice that I gave you from Farmers Equipment, okay? So.
30 seconds, please.
That's, I've got 10.
30 seconds left.
Okay, 30 seconds. So that's the main, that's the gist of what I'm talking about.
Quick question. Have you talked with Keith Wilmower, our assessor, about this? Cause he's the one that assesses the taxes.
Well, no, I'm just coming to open up. I didn't even know this thing existed.
Okay.
And still I started to look at it in the last, in the last six months or so, okay?
Ms. Brenner.
I see the taxes here, but it, it doesn't say what it's for. And I'm wondering, instead of raw materials, could it be that that's the, that's the land itself?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay. So this is just for the.
The, the, I'm only talking about the personal property taxes, not the real property taxes.
Oh, the first, well, I see it, but okay. It says sales tax. Is this, so it says sales tax, so is this when they?
No, no. When you go and buy a picker, just like anything else, you have to buy, pay sales tax, okay?
Right.
But, uh, and, and a comparison is to, to take the parts of the raw materials that Ford is making automobile parts with.
I get that.
They don't, they don't have to pay sales tax on, on the raw materials, okay? That's when, when it comes to the, the thing of the consumer, then they have to pay sales taxes, okay? This is unfair. There should be something above it. And I'm gonna try to do something.
Mr. Sidhu.
Mr. Elliott, do you mean that when the farmer buys the blueberry plants or poles or irrigation equipment, they are tax exempt already on those?
No, 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 no.
So they are paying tax on those as well?
Exactly. And those are all raw materials. They all become part of the, what it takes to grow the blueberries or the raspberries, as this gentleman well knows, okay? It doesn't make any sense. And the, the other thing that doesn't make any sense is that there was a, the, the state passed a thing giving an exemption to this, and then they don't give it to the county, the county.
Ms. Brenner.
Does the state exemption exempt sales tax or property tax?
The personal property tax.
Well, I think this is sales tax.
No, 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 no. I'm just giving the example. Here's, here's the form, okay?
I saw this. Yeah, I see. I, I have a copy of that.
I suspect we're not gonna be able to decipher this for us.
Yeah.
For you. It'd be better if we got the assessor in on this.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
An executive Laus raised his hand and.
Thank you very much.
Cause he deals with the taxes.
Could you also leave your name and phone number with our clerk?
Yes.
I'd like to find out more about it.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is something totally new.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else during the open session? If there's people that wanna speak, if you wanna move to the front, that kind of moves things along. Mr. Perry.
Max Perry, Watkin County. Uh, I sat through your, your committee meeting this morning with the Natural Resources Committee, and you were talking about the proposed, uh, Watkin County Comprehensive Water Advisory Committee. And I've also sat through, not too many years ago, where you guys were discussing how many committees you have. And, and I'm, I'm glad you have a, a new legislative assistant that can, can quantify that for you, because I think you have more committees than, than, than I have ever dreamed about, that, that, that you can even comprehend. But my question is, do you, uh, take the advice of your committees? Do you really listen to them and take them? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else during the open session? If people can come up front, we won't have to watch you walk down the aisle. It is.
Good day. Commissioners and Office of Commissioners, I'm here as Carol Alongi, A-L-O-N-G-I, with a few related items. One of them, I'd like to thank any of you that might've had something to do with dealing with Opportunity Council funding today for housing grant. Thank you. Other than that, I brought it to your attention because there's a glitch in the matrix and the accountability and oversight has to be stepped up exponentially and also with detail. When you get information from a business, perhaps you can get tax returns and things like that. When you're dealing with a nonprofit, it's a little more complicated. The Opportunity Council, I believe, made a grave error and a number of smaller errors. But what has come to my attention, I used to be a professional until I completely lost my health. And so I've sat on both sides of the fence and it's rather easy for me to see certain things that are going on. I have a huge background of research. And, uh, it's not just, uh, Opportunity Council in this county. But they'll put out statistics and they'll put out, um, a long list of the benefits and services that they provide, number one. If they did not get that information from their clients, it's not okay. And you have to come up to bat for the people, in this case, whether they're homeless or whatever, and get their statistics. How did that, you know, Opportunity Council do? How's this county doing? Without that, close your doors. They had presented to me for a number of weeks that if I found my own place, they don't do any help to find your place. At least for an elderly person that's disabled. You do it all on your own. All they do is administrative work and gather statistics. And then if you're lucky, maybe they'll help you with move-in funding once a year, which I never had before, but, um, what happened is I worked really, really hard. I had some special situations where I didn't wanna sign a year's lease. It's hard to find month to month. You can't find anything hardly affordable. I know this is a subject you're probably tired of. Okay. Finally found the landlord, called up that, that morning, said, you know, call later this afternoon and we'll have the information for you. By the time we called back, they said, oh, we don't have any more funding. Sorry, bye. Unbelievable. You don't do that. It's absolutely not ethical to say you're gonna provide services, which is my main point here, and then you don't. If you're not gonna provide services to elderly people, fine.
30 seconds, please.
Don't say that you are. Just provide services to moms with kids and things like that. But what they have done, and it's been a series of misrepresentations and making it difficult. It needs, we need to have, as far as I'm concerned, investigation. It needs to be neutral third party for how the city funds are being used according to these matters and going back for a number of years when billions of dollars are received. The brick and mortar doesn't seem like it's appearing in this county, the low-income housing, et cetera. And accountability has to step up and it has to meet the services that are needed and the programs that are alleged that they're providing, and it's not working.
Thank you. And we did receive your communication earlier today also.
And somebody must have.
Yes. Ms. Brenner.
You're the member and I saw, was it from you that said you were gonna look into?
Yeah, so I, I got your email and I'm the liaison to the Opportunity Council Board. And I, uh, reached out to the executive director of the Opportunity Council to investigate on, you know, preliminary, you know, what I found you were making some pretty serious allegations and I was upset about it. So, uh, he's gonna get back to me and, uh, send the board, after he's had a chance to talk to you. I don't know if that's happened yet, but that, that was his next step, he told me.
He seemed to be out of the loop. Jessica, the manager, has taken care of things, at least for me. And I'm sorry, this was short notice today. I've done a lot of research myself. Haven't had a chance to print anything out for you, but I will get it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening for open session?
I'd just like to say thank you for listening to.
You bet.
And that would be nice, have that on the record.
Carol Perry, Watkin County. I guess he, he voices, uh, the, um, the emotions of the public, because it's, it's sort of, uh, daunting to come before you. We respect you as people, um, that have, um, a lot of expertise and knowledge. So when our emotions get to the point where we come, it's like, can I really speak to this group? I come before you because of what went on in the Finance and Administrative Services Committee today in your discussion about the jail and finances and things that were on the budget and so forth. As you know, uh, I've been with you here as you heard all of the testimony about the jail. When the task force came, when you discussed the location, when you discussed the number of beds, when you discussed DLR. That was especially, uh, interesting to me, because my son-in-law works for NBBJ in Seattle, a huge firm that goes all over the world. And, um, DLR was selected above them because they had special expertise. I listened while you talked about the environmental certification, Eagle, Silver, and, you know, a lot of this is over my head, but I listened. I saw the, the many, many presentations, spreadsheets and dates, updates. I was here at the Health Board when the prosecuting attorney said, "We have a committee on mental health mandated by the state. It hasn't been meeting, but I have the facts and figures." There was months and months and months of updates, months of information. I, I was really, as a citizen, I thought, how much, how much information do you need? And then at the end, there was a cry for more information. I, I couldn't believe it. I wanted to say something then, but I, I'm just a citizen.
30 seconds, please.
Okay. When this came out, I didn't even read it. I didn't need to. But I tell you, if your faces had been on this sheet to the people, Mr. Sidhu, you, you said, "We need to find out why the people didn't have the information." Any one of you.
You're kinda blocking the microphone.
Any one of you, if you had your, if you had your faces on this and said, "We need a jail," any one of you could have pushed
Time.
that, that thing over, that, that election. I'm saying, don't make us spend money again. Don't make the taxpayers pay for another DLR study or an NBBJ study or, or whatever. Take, take the information and get a jail.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seen no one else? I'm gonna, oh, I see somebody almost getting up. Last person, unless someone comes up and lines up, this gentleman will be the last one.
Everett Barton, Bellingham. We just noticed that the, the request for, um, um, request for more sheriff's cars is on, is on today's paperwork, put it that way. Now, I, I don't, I'm not gonna say anything about it tonight, but, but I, I just want you guys to know that we'll probably be raising a big stink about that. Because we, we don't really understand how that funding should go forward when we need to refurbish the jail right next door. And, uh, and so that's a problem. And, uh, people probably, I, you know, I'm just saying this on the spur of the moment, partly because the, the lady that just spoke, uh, you know, brought things, dredged the same problems up. But, um, I think that needs to be looked into, um, as far as whether they need to be armored or the armoring of, of new cars or whatever. We, we feel, we, people that I'm representing, Restorative Community Coalition, believe that we have enough sheriff's cars already. Um, some, sometimes they're not even on the road, they're just parked. So, uh, this is, this is raising some eyebrows, uh, in, in my progressive sector of, of individuals in the county. Just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna close the, uh, open session and we're gonna move on to our regular business. First is the consent agenda from the Finance and Administrative Services Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the Watkin County Finance and Administrative Services Committee met today and we considered 15, sorry, 16 items under the consent agenda. And I would like to, um, ask that we consider items, uh, one through six and eight through 14 and then 16, and then deal with seven and 15 separately.
Okay, so we pulled seven and 15. Any others that we want to pull for more discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Well, if we're gonna, 17, you mean 15.
15 and 7.
Seven and 15.
Okay, so if we're gonna do 15, I wouldn't mind asking the same thing about 17, about 16.
16, okay. So we're voting on one through six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Any others?
And these items all received their recommendation of 3-0 and I so move.
All right. So we have the motion in front of us. Any discussion on any of those items? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Those pass unanimously. Number seven.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I pulled number seven separately because there is a replacement version from the packet. It was, um, the light going to blue version that we dealt with early on. So that was this version here.
All right.
Uh, this, this resolution also received a vote of 3-0 and I so move.
All right. So number seven in front of us, the replacement blue version. Any discussion on it? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, look. I, I thought we were gonna get a little bit more information, uh, just about different, um, the department, the list of department heads and their salary ranges.
And comparative.
Nan Kalunki from the HR Department sent that to the council at about 3:30 this afternoon for all of your considerations. So if you check your email, it's, uh, there.
It squeaked past me. All right. I'll do that.
Anybody wanna hold this one while we go run and look at our email? Are we good? I do have it in front of me. If you, uh, if, I'm just thinking, I printed it out and you wanted to know who the department heads were, uh, I can read that list to you now.
Yeah, sure. That'd be great.
So in the department head group, we have Administrative Services Director, which is unfilled at this particular time. Public Works Director, Health Director, Planning and Development Services, Public Defender, Superior Court Administrator, Department of Parks and Recreation, and the District Court and District Court Probation Administrators. They fall within the department head group. And then the management group, which is the 400 range in the pay scale, includes the prosecutor, Chief Deputy Prosecuting Attorneys, uh, Facilities, Finance, Health, Human Resources, Information, Community Health. I believe we go down Division Managers and PDS, um, Detention Managers, so on and so forth. There's probably, and Clerk of the Council. So that's the 400 level that's in the management range. And then we have the support group underneath that, and then the professional and supervisory group underneath that. We sent you a whole document with pretty much everybody within the organization in terms of unrepresented free.
Okay, and, and I'm sorry that it, I, I didn't catch that in my, in my inbox. But just for clarification, when we talked about it earlier, um, we had a discussion about whether the clerk of the council was a department head, and I thought the answer was yes.
I, I.
According to actually not.
Yeah, I don't think I answered that at that particular time, but that was an assumption that we went through. But according to the chart that I got this afternoon is, is the Clerk of the Council is on a, in the 400 range, which goes all the way from at 450 at the top of the 400 range, which would be the crim, Chief Criminal Deputy Prosecuting Attorney, down to the 400 range, which is, uh, includes Clerk of the Council. So it is all listed out in there. Ms. Brenner.
Well, some of us are interested in making a few little tweaks and changes, but that'll, we'll, we'll bring that up to you at another time. I just wanted to make sure it's on the record.
Yeah, the, the council is, uh, follows under the, you know, the payroll, um, hierarchy that we have developed in terms of our policy. And if the chair of the council wished to take a look at anybody within the council office, we would do what we do with any of the other positions is, is do a, a rating and a ranking of that as it relates internally and externally within, uh, the other jurisdictions and then ma, make a recommendation of whether it fits the policy. And, uh, be more than happy to work that through with you, uh, at a future date. Good timing, cause we're just moving into the evaluation season. There you go.
Yeah.
Mr. Sidhu.
I wanted to point out another thing, that in the email from the HR Department, they said they are going to get rid of all the subcategories. said they are going to get rid of all the subcategories. There was another mention in there with that this chart, which was given to us earlier, is not the correct. Because over time, they're trying to eliminate all these rest of the categories and have only 525, I believe.
Correct, yeah. The subcategories, and I'd have to, through my recollection, it seems to me through the 2007, 2008 downturn time, we, and with some of the settlements that we had, is, we needed to do, we needed to bridge some, bridge some challenges that we had within the organization. We created some subcategories, and now we're trying to get it back focused. So, it was the correct thing to do at the time, and it's not hurting us in any way, except we're moving away from that and trying to get everybody into a, into a particular category. And the reason the subcategories were made is, is that we had premium pay that was, was there, and then when the premium pay was eliminated, is, is that we needed to, we needed to make adjustments, and that's when they were created. So, it all works out.
I just wanted to bring to the notice of everybody that is another thing.
Right, Mr. Mann.
So, I would, I'd like to hold this, and, and it's mostly because just getting, having some information in committee that's changing now, and I, again, I'm sorry that I missed it in my email, but I'd like to go back and look at that, so that I have the full picture, because this, it's not, what you just read is different than what we were told in committee. So, just my preference would be to hold it, but I, if you guys are comfortable with it, you go ahead.
The unrep resolution that's before you would be, I think, effective January 4th, first full payroll period in January, so there would be no problem holding that over till December 8th, if that's what the council chose to do.
So, is that your motion?
That's my motion, is to hold this till December 8th. Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we've held number seven. On to number 15.
So, Mr. Chairman, number 15 was a resolution ordering the cancellations of accounts receivable for more than one year old. This received a vote of recommendation of two for and one against, myself voting against it, but I move approval to the council on the discussion.
All right, so there's a motion to approve. Do you wanna elaborate on why you voted against?
Well, the resolution is for the cancel, cancellation of accounts receivable, and I went through the list, and I saw several names, that when I did a bit of research, I see that they do have a capacity to pay. And so, I would like to dig further into why we're writing off these debts, when it's clear that these people do appear to have the assets to pay. I'd like to know what the, I wouldn't like to be too quick on some of this.
Mr. Mann.
I was, I heard that conversation this afternoon, I did not weigh in on it, but I completely agree with Mr. Brown's logic, unless there's some reason that I don't know of why we need to go ahead with this, I, I would like to get maybe the treasurer, or the other folks involved who are assigning these fees, or fines, or taxes, or uncollected amounts, and figure out why we're not collecting it, especially when, as you pointed out, some of them clearly have the ability to pay. So, I'm, I'm gonna agree with Mr. Brown on this one.
And I'd also add, there is absolutely no urgency on this issue whatsoever.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, that was what I was gonna ask, can, can we hold this? Okay. Fine with me.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us for approval, unless there's an amended motion.
I move to hold.
Okay, Ms. Brenner has moved to hold.
I just wanted to make another comment.
Is there a second, can I have her motion? Okay, the move to hold is seconded. Mr., Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, if you could hold and refer it back to finance at the December 8th meeting, I would be able to have staff members there to be able to answer council's questions. If you put it on as a direct hold, I think it comes back to the full council in two weeks in the evening, so I'd rather, I'd appreciate having it back at council, so we could take care of this during the day.
All right, so hold and direct to finance?
That's my motion.
All right, it's been seconded. Mr. Sedu.
I just wanted to make a comment, that I was looking through that, too. First thing, it is $200,000 amount, I think that should be known to the public. The other part is that some of these accounts are from 2002, and some of these accounts are below $50. Some of these accounts are like $6,000, or $4,000. So, there is a variety of questions I have, that when we get a list like this, okay, you know, we write off over one year old, we must have some kind of criteria, you know, either based on number of years, amount, capacity to pay, and other thing, or what action county has already, or the staff has already taken to collect those, and why they are uncollectible. So, this is kind of, you know, that's what these questions came to my mind, that nothing was clear, it was a list of amounts, and just then write them off. So, when we talk about in a couple of weeks, maybe there might, might be some kind of study or explanation of different groups of these accounts, so that we can comprehend which we should really write off. That I, I'm, I'm in favor of that, for 50 bucks, 10 years old, we don't wanna carry it on our books, so that was my suggestion.
Thank you for that. We'll be more than happy to come back with a report on, on why the fines were levied. Most of these charges are through planning and development services for land use fines. A lot of, a lot of these issues, I'm sure, have resolved themselves over the years without the, in, part of the settlement was, is that they don't have to pay the fine, but it remains on the books, and it takes legislative authority to get them off the books. But we'll come with a full explanation. As we said, a lot of these are from 2002, 2003, and 2004, so two weeks is not gonna hurt us at this particular time, to, all, for all of us to have a little bit of an education on why they're there, and why we need to take this action to get rid of them. And we may learn something at that particular time, also for, for all of us to use into the future.
Just to follow up, like, this is not only knowledge of these seven people, it's knowledge of public, as well as, as a matter of record, why these things were written off.
Yep. Mr. Brown.
Agreed.
And just for clarity, my question is towards the large amounts owed by people who demonstrably have the, the ability to pay.
I've already put in action the game plan for us to get back to you in two weeks. We're gonna have PDS research, the bigger, the bigger fines that are on there, and then we're also gonna take, get the, why we need the legal authority to have, have council take action to write them off. So, I'm looking forward to giving you a full report in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. All right, so we have the motion in front of us to hold this and direct it to finance committee on December 8th. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Number 16.
And, Mr. Chairman, the last item was a resolution ordering the cancellation of warrants more than one year old, and I'd just like to point out, in this particular case, a warrant is referring to an obligation of the county to pay money, not a warrant for the, for the person named in the document.
All right.
This, this received a vote of three zero, and I say move.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us. Ms. Brenner.
I move we hold this in, and direct it to finance in two weeks, too, because, and I mentioned it, I don't need to mention it tonight, there was, there was one, and I didn't even look that closely, but that was very hard for me to understand why it would be uncollected. So, I'd like to get that same kind of information proposed.
I think these aren't uncollected, these are checks the county's written that people haven't cashed.
Yes. Oh, oh, so that one was just that they hadn't cashed it?
Yes.
Oh, never mind.
I can send you a check, Ms. Brenner, but I can't...
No, that's okay, that's okay, I thought it was, yeah.
Mr. Sedu.
I, I had a, just a suggestion that, which was raised in the committee meeting also, this word warrant, when public sees it, cancellation of warrants, it just, that's what it says. And warrants are, in people's mind, is related to the law and justice, and police, and court actions and things. Warrants are not easily understood, it's a uncollected check. So, we should think of changing that name somehow, so that people who read these notes two years from now, or somebody else who's not familiar with this, doesn't see, oh, here the county council canceled 2,000 warrants against people.
All right, I noticed one of them is Ms. Brenner's payroll check from a couple of years ago.
Couple, that was 20 years ago.
I'm pretty good. But, yeah, because that's what, I really didn't have the right understanding, because I, yeah, warrants did seem more like...
It's a weird word to use.
Yeah.
Okay, so that one's been recommended and moved. Any other discussion, now that we know what we're talking about? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, other items, the first of four other items was an ordinance establishing the South Pass Road, Sire Creek Bridge, 2000, sorry, 212 fund, and establishing a project-based budget for the South Pass Road, Sire Creek, 212 replacement project. This received a vote of three zero, and I say move.
All right, we have that motion in front of us. Any discussion? Creating this new road project fund. Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Pete Cremon.
Yes.
Ken Nan.
Yes.
Scott Paul Sedu.
Yes.
Carl Weimer.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, the next item was an... $22,111, this received a recommendation of three zero, and I say move.
Yes.
Pete Cremon.
Yes.
Ken Nan.
Yes.
Scott Paul Sedu.
Yes.
Carl Weimer.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, the next item was an ordinance amending the 2016 Watkins County budget first request in the net amount of $7,389,037. In addition to what was in the packet, there was a request by the council, the committee, to retain 200,000 in the jail fund for a future jail planner. And, Madam Clerk, did I correctly state the amendment?
I think it was a criminal justice system planner, not a jail planner.
Sorry, okay, criminal justice system, that's why I was asking, I couldn't remember the exact language.
Sorry?
Do you have the, the exact language of the resolution that we passed on it, or the amendment that we passed on it?
The motion was to designate $200,000 from the existing jail fund in the 2016 budget for a criminal justice planner, to assist the council in moving forward with jail planning efforts.
So, this entire ordinance with the amendment received a recommendation of three zero, and I say move.
All right, we have the motion in front of us. Mr. Cremon.
Thank you. Just for clarity's sake, I, huh, I, I just suggest that when we say a jail planner...
Criminal justice.
Or criminal justice planner, the first thing that comes to my mind is an individual, not a, not a planning effort, not a, not a contract, not a consultant. And, and I'm wondering if we could kind of wordsmith that, so that it is what, it is, it says what it really is, rather than, and, to me, I, I just automatically interpret that to be an individual, and not, and not a, going out to bid for a, for a study, or a consultant for, for jail planning. Or, maybe, maybe with, for jail planning purposes, or something like that, rather than a jail planner.
I just want to, for clarification, was the ordinance moved?
It was not seconded.
And then, we need, no, we don't need to, it doesn't need a second, but the...
Because it comes from committee.
We should move the, the ordinance first, and then move the amendment.
All right, so the, I think you moved the ordinance...
I moved it, so...
Right.
I think she's asking first for a second, and then discussion.
No, she says you don't need one.
No, I just, I would like to have, there needs to, the ordinance itself...
If we're gonna amend the language...
Yes.
We need a separate amendment.
A second, correct.
Okay.
Okay, I, I would propose an amendment to more fully clarify the intent.
All right, so something to the lines that we're earmarking $200,000 for a criminal justice system...
Planning.
Planning effort, or for planning purposes, and you also include there, "from existing funds."
Right, so it's no increase in the amount.
So, I second that.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Ms. Brenner.
I have an amendment to set aside $40,000 from Public Works to, to augment the planning unit, and this would require requests for use of the money to come to the council for approval.
Okay, so this is the $40,000 the planning unit requested for their own outreach to their members in the public.
Yeah, and it was a little confusing as to what the uses could be, and I would rather have a more defined request from the planning unit as to the uses, but I wanna make sure the money is set aside to do that.
Okay, are you gonna address the second part of their request also?
Well, to me, I, to me, it's all together, for, for staff assistance, for minutes, and for other related issues that would come to the council for approval.
Okay, but I don't think, my opinion was, it wasn't all together in their thing. They, they asked specifically for staff assistance and administrative stuff, one pot, and then another pot of $40,000 for their own outreach to their caucuses, so...
Right.
Which piece of it are you, are you, $40,000 for both?
I put them together, yeah.
And if our staff time takes up all that, they get no outreach money?
Well, I'm not saying they couldn't come forward and request more money, but that's the money that I wanna see set aside, because I, I had a little trouble understanding. I, I mean, it's, it's a little broad, and I'd like to have it more specific, and I think I can get the votes if it's more specific, so...
Okay, so that's the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Sedu.
I was gonna just elaborate on that, that the request from, the request has been very clear, they want two parts of money. One, they want staff support, which is not quantified in dollars and cents, and second thing, they want $40,000, clearly earmarked for the outreach. So, that's what the discussion was in, in the committee also. And, and I think that staff support is, is more, I mean, I would support that staff support, just that.
Well, I think councilmembers Sedu and I have a different understanding of what outreach means, and without having the planning unit here to better define it, I just wanna set the money aside, and I saw John come up to you, so maybe Public Works isn't the best place to, to get the money. I don't know, I want that money set aside.
Executive Laos.
Well, first I'd like to say is, is all of the staff that we have hired at this particular time, we have fully budgeted for. So, we don't need money to transfer money from anywhere to pay for our existing staff. What you, I think you're asking for is, is an allocation of staff time to be able to support the planning unit. That probably would be best asked for through a resolution by the council, or just a simple ask when the time came, is, did we have the money to do that? Because if we don't have the staff time for it, then the allocation of money would either need to go to outside resources, or more staff to take care of it. So, in terms of providing staff support, if you're gonna provide staff support and want an answer right now, I need to define how much staff support that's going to be. If it's going to be a halftime position, we don't have a halftime, we don't, we don't have anybody that we can dedicate to it for that amount. Secondly, as it relates to the, to the, to the other $40,000, is, is council needs to make a decision that it probably needs to be general fund, because we aren't going to be able to pay that for that out-of-road fund. So, I think in the motion that you make, you need to identify where the money is. Realistically, though, if the council is going to bring the planning unit up, and the water, the water committee up, the first part of March, I will give you...
have a separate statutory authority, and I'm confused, I'm concerned about confusion of the planning unit sending out messaging to the public, effectively under the banner of Watkins County, without the approval of either the executive or the council, and that that could cause confusion and conflict with other programs. So, I would like to follow the executive's example, and delay this for several months, until we've got clarity as to exactly what any of this money or resources is going to be used for.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, we don't have clarity on what the jail planning, or the criminal justice planning is going to do either, and I did not say what it's going to be specifically used for, I said to augment, and it would have to come to us. That's your comment on saying what they put in their request, I didn't say it that way. I said my motion to augment forty, up to 40,000, to augment the planning unit efforts, and it would come to the council first. So, I don't see, the council's going to get to decide when it comes to us specifically, but I think just, I think it would be extremely disrespectful to just put something like this off, and, you know, it's happened in the past to the planning unit, and I don't know why people think it's so bizarre that people from the planning unit and other people who support the planning unit think that the council doesn't care about the planning unit at all, because that keeps happening with those kinds of statements. I feel like we should, we could put the money aside, and we know it's there, and then it would be up to them to be very specific with us. So, that's my motion, and it was seconded.
Okay, so we have the motion in front of us to set aside $40,000 that.
To augment planning unit efforts, which would have to come to us for approval, the specifics would have to come to us for approval.
Okay, I guess I have a question for staff, is, I'm unclear, because as of my understanding is now, there's no money for the planning unit as of the first of the year, and there's probably not, and if I understood what Mr. Laus said, there's no money for staff support of the planning unit as of the first of the year, so, is that correct?
So, speaking in terms.
Or is there a little wiggle room there?
Yes, John Hutchings, Public Works Director, so, speaking in terms of the flood control zone district fund, which was where the, the allocation of funds for, that was one-time dollars that was put forward in 2015 to, to rekindle the work of the planning unit, that money came from the flood control zone district, and there is no money in the flood control zone district budget to carry that work forward, because it's unclear what the work is. And so, at this point, and the reason I came down earlier, is, is the conversation is now around either general fund, or some other source of revenues that are not flood control zone district. So, at this point, as the executive mentioned, the appropriate place then, if we're talking in, if we're talking about the document that's before you now, the budget documents before you now, that is, that would come out of the general fund. The question you asked specifically about whether there would, there needs to be additional staff time, I think that depends on the scope of work that is being asked of staff, and I say that because there were two functions that the planning unit, two kinds of support that the planning unit got over the course of 2015. One was a facilitator, so there was a contracted, outside contractor who facilitated the work of the planning unit, and then there was a basic level of support that was offered by the staff. As to the basic level of support, if it's about taking minutes and those sorts of things, then of course, we can continue to provide that. If we're talking about something beyond that, facilitation, those sorts of things, then additional resources would need to be earmarked for that work.
All right, so, that answers my question, because I just was wondering if they had meetings in January and February, if some basic, you know, if they were going to facilitate themselves, someone could produce minutes for them.
We could do that.
Sounds like that's true.
Okay.
And actually, the people who came and spoke to us in committee today said that was what they wanted to do, is self-facilitate and not spend money on that. So, that was pretty clear. And, you know, if we say to augment, we make the decision of what it'll be augmented for.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us. I'm going to speak against the motion, because it sounds like the facilitation, taking care of, not the facilitation, but minutes, production, and the type of stuff that the planning unit said they didn't need, because they're going to self-facilitate, is covered, so I don't think we need the $40,000, and at this point, until we have a deeper discussion about another type of water advisory committee, I'm not interested in letting them start doing $40,000 out of outreach at this point. Ms. Brenner.
I didn't say outreach.
Well, you haven't defined what it is if it's not outreach.
Well, and they're going to define it as they bring them to us, the request, this is to set the money aside, that's all. I mean, you guys seem to be looking for a reason just not to support it, rather than, I made it very simple, we're going to set the money aside, if they don't bring anything worthwhile to the council, none of it'll be used.
Okay, Mr. Sidhu.
I was going to say that, is this the only way that tonight, that we can make that change, or like, suppose something comes up three months from now, and we need $40,000, is the council has no authority to approve $40,000 after today?
It does take the support, it does take the executive to initiate budget amendments mid-year, this is your opportunity to put the money in there. What you also have to realize is, is that if you put $40,000 into the budget right now, it also, next year, takes the, it takes an executive, and I'm not saying it, but it also takes an executive who's willing to sign the contract next year also. So, you can put the money in, it doesn't mean that I would spend it. So, what I'm saying is, is the reality is, is we need to work together, as we have over the past years, to make all of this happen, and we need to be generally supportive of each other's role in it, and I'm committed to you next year, is, is to work with you under that role. I, I want to make sure that the money that the planning unit expends is spent appropriately. They had money allocated to them this year, they didn't spend it, so, you know, I'd like to know what's going on also. So, in March, when all of this comes to fruition, and decisions are made, if, if the planning unit puts a good plan together, I would be supportive of moving a budget amendment through, to be able to make that happen. I think that that probably, in this instant, would be a very appropriate place to take care of it.
That's exactly my point was, that this is not like do or die tonight.
No.
Like, you know, that we, if there's a reasonable proposition to carry on the work or other work, we will do that.
The council has some big decisions to make next year, because we're working with, you know, the Lummi Nation, the Nuksek Tribe, City of Bellingham, the PUD, and Watkins County as it relates to the joint board, and how that all gets taken care of.
Yeah.
How the planning unit gets rolled into that, whether or not the council wants an advisory water committee that is more fluid and probably more nimble, in terms of operations of what the planning unit has proved to be over the last couple of years. In no way would we, do we have the ability to shut the planning unit down, I mean, that's, they have statutory authority to do that. But the council has big decisions, I, we're looking forward to working through those decisions with you, and I know that Ms. Brenner disagrees with the comments that I'm making on this, but that's how I see this particular issue. Along with the jail planner, or the criminal justice entity, you know, the allocation of funds is one thing, is, is the facilitation and the signatures on the contracts is, is falls in this, and we need to work together on that also.
Yes.
So, I, I think that moving this down the road is, is appropriate.
Mr. Cremon, then Mr. Brown, and then Ms. Brenner.
Thank you. I think the council needs to come to grips with whether we're really serious about the planning unit. I mean, if we're going to have the planning unit, we need to give them, you know, a paltry amount, $40,000 is really not an excessive amount of money, for them to, to do their work. If we're, if we're not serious about the planning unit, and you want to go a different route, then, then fine, so be it. But I don't think the planning unit should be, should be penalized for not expending some, the appropriation that they had this year, with this use it or lose it mentality, which I think is too pervasive in, in all facets of government to begin with. I think, I think we should at least set aside $40,000 without having to, you know, without, without having to go to the executive in the future, on this, on this matter. I, I, either that, or let's, I mean, why don't we just shut down the, the planning unit, and, and go a different route? Now, if we have to do it statutorily, if we have, if we're obligated to have the planning unit, then so be it, but let's not, let's not go through, you know, a, an exercise that we're not serious about. I think the planning unit does have something to offer. I, you know, I know that not everyone is, is totally satisfied with the, the speed at which progress is being achieved, but, and, you know, and I'm one of those, but if we're not going to give them a reasonable chance of succeeding, then, I mean, let's, let's, let's go another direction then. So, I, I support the, the motion made by, by Councilmember Brenner, I, you know, I think, and I don't think, I, we do need to work together with the administration, we all we should work together, but I, I think that the council needs to demonstrate its either support or non-support of the planning unit.
Mr. Brown.
So, let me be really clear for the record, I will support planning unit, or the comprehensive water advisory committee, or both, or none, based on what they're, the clarity of what they're asking for, the amount of support they're asking for, and what they're likely to deliver us in exchange for the support we give them. My concern with the planning unit is, we've been supporting them for two and a half years, and I, and I haven't seen substantive progress being made. I'm reluctant to give them funding ahead of them telling us what they're going to do to move forward, and what they're going to produce for us, if we do provide further support to them. So, all I'm saying is, tell us what we're going to get, we're going to provide support with, with the timelines, and if we, and if it offers a good return on investment for the county citizens, then I will support it.
Ms. Brenner.
That's exactly what my motion does, it sets the money aside so we can do it, and no offense to the executive, but this is the council's only opportunity to make this decision ourselves. Otherwise, we have to hope that the executive will bring a recommendation, we can't go beyond him, except now, and this is the only time we have to do it. And it's, you know, if they, if we don't, if the council doesn't believe any of the requests coming from the planning unit are worthy, the council can vote no. I mean, to me, it's real simple, it's just making sure that we have that, that placeholder, without having to count on the executive to, to decide it.
All right, we have the motion in front of us, to set aside the $40,000. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, I think that passed five to two with Weimer and Buchanan opposed.
Yes.
Weimer and Brown.
Weimer and Brown opposed, okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
I think we have the whole ordinance in front of us now, unless there's other amendments. Any discussion on the entire ordinance? Guess we're ready for the roll call.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidhu?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item was the council acting as the Watkins County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors, with the request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Watkins County and the Watkins County Flood Control Zone District, established dedicating, establishing dedicated funding for the Stormwater Fund 123, in the amount of $1,167,956, and this received a recommendation of three zero, and I say move.
All right, we have that motion in front of us. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, there was nothing else from the ordinance.
All right, looks like Public Works.
We had a resolution amending, Resolution 2015-025, ordering vacating a portion of Delta Line Road to allow a due date extension. That came to our committee, it, the recommendation from committee, passed, three zero, and I still move.
All right, we have that resolution in front of us. Moved. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, I think that passed five to two with Weimer and Buchanan opposed.
Yes.
Weimer and Brown.
Weimer and Brown opposed, okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
I think we have the whole ordinance in front of us now, unless there's other amendments. Any discussion on the entire ordinance? Guess we're ready for the roll call.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidhu?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item was the council acting as the Watkins County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors, with the request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Watkins County and the Watkins County Flood Control Zone District, established dedicating, establishing dedicated funding for the Stormwater Fund 123, in the amount of $1,167,956, and this received a recommendation of three zero, and I say move.
All right, we have that motion in front of us. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, there was nothing else from the ordinance.
All right, looks like Public Works.
We had a resolution amending, Resolution 2015-025, ordering vacating a portion of Delta Line Road to allow a due date extension. That came to our committee, it, the recommendation from committee, passed, three zero, and I still move.
All right, we have that resolution in front of us. Moved. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Planning and development. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Wait, did we have something?
Yeah, extension of a, a one-year extension.
I apologize, I forgot that was added at the last second. Request approval of a one-year extension of the general binding site plan for the Bird's Bay Square North Development, we reviewed that, three to zero, recommending approval, and I move approval. Sorry about that.
All right, so we have the lime green approval of a one-year extension in front